Okay, we're live.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting of November. Hope everyone had a good Halloween and uh and we'll be interested to see if the presidential election gets determined while we're on the uh on the line here, but uh. Let's let's get going.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Wednesday, November 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We have a roll call, Councilmember Delory.
President.
Councilmember Mandell.
President.
Uh Councilmember Trustin. You muted yourself.
You muted yourself, Liz.
President.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Uh Vice President McGinnis.
President.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden, Corporation Council Simone Freeman will have a salute to the flag.
Uh Councilman Mandell, would you please lead us?
Thank you, President Bendo. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, dignity and justice for all.
Okay, so uh just so everybody knows, items two, three, and four are being removed from the agenda tonight. There were uh some more policies we were voting on, but we realized this afternoon the policies were not up on the webpage for the public to be able to review them. So uh in order to give the public the opportunity to review them before we take any action on them, uh we're gonna take those off the agenda tonight and move them to the next meeting. So uh with that, I guess we'll get to the city manager's report.
Good evening, everyone, and um thank you. And we're going to start off uh my report with Mr. John McNally.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so the city manager Gaden just asked me to give a update on where we are with our youth recreation activities. So as you all know, about a week and a half ago, we had to suspend activities because there was a positive COVID test amongst somebody that was a participant in those programs. So while we were down with those, we were also looking at our agreements with our various third-party providers uh to do that that perform those that the perform activities uh on behalf of the city. So what was announced today is that what we're gonna be doing moving forward with all of our organized youth activities is have them mirror the school district. So if when the school district comes back online, um if a middle school gets shut down because of a positive test, our middle school youth activities will be shut down. If one of the elementary schools gets shut down for a day because of a positive test in elementary schools, then our, you know, the appropriate age categories for our youth activities will get shut down for that day as well. So we're gonna we're gonna follow the school districts lead because they have the closer connections with the Department of Health and the protocols in play, and we want to err on the side of caution. Um as I'm sure most people are aware at this stage of the game, the school, because of an issue that they had within their transportation department, uh is currently only doing remote learning until the 12th. Uh they anticipate being back in person on the 12th, so all of these city-run youth programs are currently on hold until the 12th. We anticipate resuming them at that time. With respect to third-party vendor activities, we have put out an RFP that will solidify our agreements with all of those parties. We anticipate the RFP went out two Fridays ago, uh and we anticipate being able to bring um very many, if not all of those to you at the next council meetings for your considerations. And to have very many of those, if not again, if again, if not all of uh those activities and those vendors being able to perform their activities prior to Thanksgiving. We know that uh because there's not been those activities at our pool and at our ice arena, what we've worked to do is expand city operations at those two facilities. So starting tomorrow, we'll be extending, we'll be expanding offerings, general offerings, so whether it's, you know, free skating, uh skates and pucks, uh those kind of things at the ice arena and then, you know, reserve lap time at the pool. We'll be expanding those offerings at those two facilities starting tomorrow so that we can begin offering, you know, at least access to the facilities to our youth and other interested parties. Uh that communication went out to the recreational community at large today as well as on our Facebook page, uh and it's posted on our city's website. So that's where things currently stand. We hope to be fully back up and running, COVID willing, uh with everything by Thanksgiving. So any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next uh speaker will be Joe Fabrizio.
Donna, could you go over the titles each time when you talk about the staff?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you unmuted?
Hello?
Go yeah, go ahead and give your title.
Uh good evening, everyone. Um at Donna's request, I'm just gonna give a quick summary of um the DPW projects. Um DPW is currently working on over thirty projects. Um I sent the city manager a comprehensive overview of all of our projects earlier today. Um if she concurs with that summary, we're gonna distribute it to the city council and post it on the city's website. For tonight, I'm gonna give you a summary of a few of our projects that are currently in construction and some that are on the immediate horizon. Um a project, some of the projects that are currently in construction are number one, a demolition of a one million gallon standpipe. Um Worgo Construction has commenced work on the project last week, um on the demolition of the standpipe. It's anticipated that the project should be completed within a month. Another project that we just started about a week ago is the reconstruction of Edwards Boulevard between Park and Broadway. Um the contractor Allen Industries commenced work last week. The first phase involves excavating the center malls to install subsurface drainage piping um on the roadway. The remaining components include new curbs, sidewalks, ADA compliant ramps, traffic calming, bike lanes, and a new asphalt composite roadway. Another project that I know is near and dear to everyone is the lifeguard headquarters. Um it was supposed to be delivered um this month. Unfortunately, there's been a couple setbacks. It's now scheduled to arrive in mid-December. Um the delays associated with COVID-related, um those the buildings that precast concrete are required to be state inspected. And that process unfortunately has not been able to take place as quickly as we would like. So again, it's gonna be delivered now in mid-December, and I'll give you a more definitive date um when it gets closer. Uh another project we're working on is the City Hall elevators. Um the work on the first elevator should be complete, in City Hall, that is, should be complete by the end of this month. Um upon activation of the first elevator, elevator work will immediately start in the second. Um if you have a chance, you should really take a look at it. It looks spectacular. Um they're doing a really great job on it. Again, it should be ready by the end of this month, and then we'll start work immediately on the next elevator. Um another capital project is our asphalt overlay um project. We successfully completed our full asphalt overlay program. Um the following roads were paved, uh Wisconsin from Park to Oceanview, Broadway between Neptune and Roosevelt on the north side, Broadway between Long Mitrade and Monroe on the south side, Broadway Monroe to Lincoln on the south side, Lafayette from Penta Beach, and Tennessee Oceanview to the beach. Uh the total cost of this project was $240,000 and funds were derived from the capital budget. Um the least projects, you know, you get a lot of bang for your buck, you know, for $240,000, we paid um like six or seven areas. So I recommend that we continue with this program next year with funding in the capital budget. Another project I just wanted to mention was our $10 million Goser North Shore Bulkhead Project. Um the Heron and Doyle Street Canal Bulkhead is substantially complete. The only components that remain are punchest items. Um the contractor, which is Woodstock Construction, went to another job, however, he will be coming back in mid-December to commence work on the bulkheads on the West End street ends. And this work should be completed by May of 2021. Um another project of note is derived from our operating budget, uh not our capital budget. Um on November 1st, New York Trenchless took over the maintenance of our city's street lighting system from Wellsback Electric. Under this new contract, the maintenance costs were reduced from $15,000 per month to $8,000 per month, which resulted in savings of over about $168,000 over the two-year contract. Some other projects that are on the horizon, um I'm gonna give you like six or seven of those. One, which is really big, which we just found out about Friday, it's called the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Protection Project. On Friday, the city received notice that FEMA Region 2 approved $33 million for the project. A quick history, approximately one year ago, we received bids on the project. Um Angie and his estimate was $20 million. The low bid on the project was $33 million. Um at that point, uh we thought the project was dead in the water, however, we worked hard with Department of Homeland Security and FEMA and were able to secure the additional funding. Um this work could possibly start as early as March of 2021. Uh the work includes the installation of a stormwater pump station at Riverside Boulevard and a new cantilever steel bulkhead from Monroe Boulevard to the waterfront park. Um another project that's gonna be, and this work is starting as early as March, um another project that's gonna... Yes?
This is Liz. I don't wanna, I hate to interrupt, but can you just put your phone a little closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm actually in the office. Can you hear me now? Is that better? I apologize.
Much better. Thank you.
That better? Thank you. Sorry. Um another project that we're gonna be working on is the Goser Drainage Project. The city was awarded approximately $5 million for the drainage project, well, which addresses chronic flooding slash drainage issues on Park between New York and Neptune, National between Broadway and Park, and the intersection of Riverside and Pine. We're gonna go be going out to bid shortly on this project, and we're hoping to start uh work in March of 2021. It's approximately a one-year project. Um another project that's coming up is the Boyd Street Reconstruction. Um the plans and specs are approximately ninety percent complete, which we designed in-house. We anticipate bidding this project over the winter and commencing construction in March 2021. Um we just received bids, another project, uh replacement of the PVC pool liner at the Recreation Center. We received bids on October 29th. The low bidder was Renesys Contracting at $114,250. Uh dependent on the availability, availability of funds, we'd like to commence work on this project over the winter. We also have two uh HMP projects, hazard mitigation projects, um that were approved by FEMA. One is for the Ice Arena. Um approximately $500,000 was awarded by FEMA to implement hazard mitigation at the Ice Arena. Um the design is approximately ninety percent complete. We're looking to bid the project and initiate construction in March 2021. Um the Martin Luther King Center Hazard Mitigation Project, we were awarded approximately $350,000 by FEMA to implement hazard mitigation at the MLK Center. The design for this project is approximately a hundred percent complete. We are looking to bid the project and initiate construction in March as well of 2021. Um finally, I just wanted to mention that the STOP Program is scheduled for the Sunday on November 8th, between now and 8:00 and 3:00. Um it's a great program. I encourage everyone to attend. Um if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Joe, could you just explain to people what the STOP Program is so they know that, you know, if they wanna participate?
Yes, the the STOP Program, basically residents in the city of Long Beach can take their household hazardous waste if you have any old latex paint, if uh many things of that nature. You can bring them uh to the STOP Program on Saturday. Uh they do a great job. We typically get a turnout of about 1,200 cars. Um the town of Kempson runs the program in coordination with the city. Um it's a really, really great event. We've been doing it for many years, so I really encourage everyone to come out. You know, unfortunately, we didn't have it in April, so this is a rescheduled date, so um you know, from April, so hoping that we get a nice turnout. I encourage everyone to attend.
And and where would people bring their material?
It's basically, it's right behind the Long Island Railroad parking garage. If you go down um Center Street, um right in front of the police department, that's where you enter. Um and you exit uh through the City Hall parking lot onto National Boulevard.
Okay.
Joe, hi, Joe. This is Karen. I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
So I remember with the garage, there was a, I think it was a, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a Goser project for about a half a million dollars to help the central garage in terms of fixing the infrastructure. But we, we apparently declined that money because we apparently may have other plans for the garage. Is that correct?
Actually, that's a very, that's a great point that you bring up. We still do have approximately uh through FEMA about $550,000 to implement, to implement hazard mitigation at the garage. Um it's been essentially placed on hold because of all the discussion regarding the sale of the facility, but you are correct. We had approximately $550,000, which we still have um to basically um implement hazard, hazard mitigation measures to protect the garage, including like the replacement of the storm drain system inside the building, putting in like um stop lock systems at all the entrances to prevent flooding. Um but we absolutely do have that money still, but um it's basically been put on hold while discussions continue regarding the sale of the building.
So Joe, this goes to my bigger question, which is you talked about uh capital improvements at the MLK Center and for more relevant, I think, the ice rink, right? So there's, there's other factors at play in terms of fixing or improving the capital or improving the infrastructure of that building, i.e. the ice rink. So I'm not sure what mechanism is in place within the city to make sure that we are not moving forward on projects which may have better or bigger ideas in play later on.
Well, that's actually another interesting, excellent point, um especially, especially with the ice arena, because one of the issues that came up when we started to design hazard mitigation work on the exterior of the building is that the um east side of the building, the existing corrugated steel exterior was actually settling, so to speak, and the whole bottom is corroded. So we had to look at it and say, okay, well, we can't, we can't protect the exterior of the building until we repair the exterior of the building. So what we're doing now is we're gonna actually incorporate within the design um the repairs to the exterior facade of the east wall that um if you go over there, it really is unbelievable. We put in new doors, and a few months after we put them in, we couldn't open them because it appears like the whole steel on the side basically settled because of corrosion along the base. So we are gonna be incorporating in those plans uh repairs to the exterior of the building. Most of this is for the exterior, exterior work that the FEMA wanted for.
So so how would the council know that if I didn't ask?
About the, well, yeah, I was just giving you an overview of the Ice Arena mitigation project. Um I'd love, I have no problem continuing the dialogue.
Okay, how, how you would know is that when you approve the capital budget, it's in the capital budget. Um we put out an Ice Arena RFP, and in the RFP, we state that those plans, we have money that is supposed to be coming in for the hazard mitigation. So anything that we do where we have big plans for any money coming in, we make sure that we're not going to spend the money if in fact we're going to do something else with the property. So we, that's why the money for the garage is on hold until we find out what we're going to do with the garage. Um everybody is in agreement, we're not gonna spend money on that, we're not gonna use that money to spend on the garage if we're gonna sell the garage. So what's happening is that I asked Joe to come on today to give an idea of the capital projects that we have had in the budget. And what we're going to do now is that he has put a spreadsheet together that will be going on to the website. And so that, and it's well over thirty projects that we're working on all at the same time, so that anyone that wants to know where we are in a particular project, what's coming up on that project, they will be able to go to the website to take a look.
So just because the council approves something doesn't mean it should be spent, is what you're saying?
No, the, what you approved was a capital plan. When we get ready to spend the money, we'll let you know. We're not spending the money. That's why it hasn't come up.
Right, just for your information as well, like right now in the capital budget, it, it shows $3 million for FEMA HMP work. I don't think it really designates the actual which project it's for. So there's a separate list that, you know, that's in that summary that I gave Donna today that lists all of the HMP projects that are in various stages of uh design. Um the two that we're trying to shoot for to build uh potentially in March was MLK and the Ice Arena. Those are the two we were gonna uh shoot to complete, which each one's about $500,000 each.
I have two words to add, maybe, if now is a good time.
Um could I ask a couple of questions, Ina? This is Mike.
Sure.
Unless, Ina, why don't you go ahead, but I just wanna reserve time afterwards to ask Joe one or two questions.
Right, so I wanted to say that Tristi McInnes was absolutely right in mentioning that the funds that were borrowed in, I believe, 2018, maybe 2017, for the purposes of um making renovations in a central garage were actually deemed unnecessary right now in light of the fact that we are um working on different plans for this property. So this money were used when we were refinancing short-term debt in the beginning of September. That was used to pay down the debt, the notes. So while we have FEMA portion, you're also absolutely right that whatever was borrowed by the city for that, we went, um I went uh and analyzed all the funded projects with the DPW and wherever funds were available. They evaluated if they were needed or not, and whatever was not needed was used for the debt service. Uh obviously, the most material part of it was for the garage, and I think you are right that it was about $600,000.
Um Joe, this is uh Councilman Delory. How are you?
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Joe, I just wanna point out a couple of things. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the Broadway, uh East Broadway overlay and some of the boulevards, Lafayette. And I haven't seen Wisconsin, but I imagine that is uh from Park to Oceanview are much needed, and I'm sure it's a well-done uh job. Couple of questions I have, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer them this evening, but here goes. The, the pool liner, from what I remember, was, and this may be for Ina, available from different funding sources. It's probably maybe fourteen thousand higher than we estimated. I think it was estimated between, let's say, ninety-five and a hundred thousand. The the elevators, you're, you're hopeful that, did you say by the end of November or the end of this year? I couldn't hear um when that interior, in, the interior will be able to be seen um by either us or the council. And the last question, or the new um firm that replaced Wellsback with the lighting, would they also be working on any boardwalk lights or entrances that still need relamping? Or is the boardwalk, I'm, I'm looking at Laurelton Boulevard entrance, um but it may be done. I just wanted an update on that. And the, you just described, what is the Monroe Boulevard to waterfront park overlay? If you could just answer that one, Joe, just so I could see it visually in my mind what that is. That's my, those are my questions.
Hello?
Hello?
Uh yes, the, the, um, the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Protection Project covers the area from Monroe Boulevard all the way to the waterfront park. So what they'll be doing, I don't know if you've been over there recently, but um the shoreline is really, really deteriorating badly over there. It's almost to the point where you could um see some of the utilities exposed along the waterfront. So what we're gonna be doing there is we're gonna be putting in, the first phase they'll do is to stabilize the shoreline by putting in, um it's called cantilever steel sheeting. It's sheeting that doesn't require a tieback. They basically um just drive the steel straight into the ground very deep, and that'll be basically the new um northern border of the city in that area. And the elevation that'll, that'll be installed at is the base flood elevation, which is approximately elevation nine or ten in that area. We're also gonna be putting in um our first stormwater pump station at Riverside Boulevard as part of the project. Um that pump station, you know, when it, because there's, that's a really, really bad problem area in the city, all of Riverside Boulevard, especially by Pine and the MLK Center on Riverside. So now, in the event of the storm, if there's a floodwaters on the south side accumulating, it'll force the water out. Um so again, it's gonna be the first stormwater pump station in Long Beach of its kind. Um we're also gonna be replacing all of the water mains. Um there's, there's like, I think, two water mains that traverse or parallel the shoreline in that area. That's gonna be upgraded. We're actually gonna be jetting them or directionally drilling them under the railroad tracks. Um and they're actually gonna be putting a stop lock system to stop water from penetrating through the railroad in the event of the storm. So it's a, it's a really, you know, we're gonna take down the gun range, too, that's over there as part of the project. So it's a, it's a comprehensive project, you know, it's a great project. It's been a long time coming. It's uh zero, zero city funding for the project. We're all gonna have to discuss very shortly um bonding for the project, because the way these projects work, it's a reimbursement project. So we have to spend the money first, and we get the money back. So in the next couple of months, we're gonna have to have dialogue, how we're gonna, you know, put the money out first and get reimbursed for it. I've already had some preliminary discussions with Donna and Ina about that, but we're certainly gonna have to resolve that. Um as far as your second question, I think it was regarding the new street lighting contract, the New York Trenchless. As part of the, the new maintenance contract, the boardwalk lights will be their responsibility. However, um the, the retrofits that we recently did um is sort of, it's a different story, quite honestly. Right now, we've replaced 113 out of 119 lights on the boardwalk. Um I submitted the bill last week for all of the costs associated with the retrofits, the Sternberg lighting, which came out to approximately $85,000. I sent the copy of the letter to, to Ina and the, and the city manager. And I also submitted the list of materials that I needed for the remaining six lights. My thought process there is I'm probably gonna have them deduct the materials that are needed to repair the remaining six lights from the eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollar bill that I sent them, because it really wasn't their fault. There was, these were just like missing materials that it was discovered when we went to put up the lights. So um I guess the, the long and short of it is, yes, the maintenance of the system will be the responsibility of New York Trenchless. However, I'm still working on the overall Sternberg problem um as we, and moving on. Um I think you, oh, the third question I think you said was the PVC pool liner. Um you know, we're gonna work internally to find that $114,000. I know there was some discussion that it was supposed to be CD DG money. Um we brought that up briefly this morning. We're gonna have to have a separate internal meeting, because not only do we have to replace the pool liner, but we have to fix that balcony wall simultaneously. We have separate money to fix the balcony wall. It's currently um separating from the balcony. Um so our intent was to close the pool and take care of the wall and, and the liner at the same time. So we have to do, you know, a lot of planning that's gonna be involved in that. We're gonna have to shut down the pool. Obviously, we have to discuss the funding. I think, was there a fourth point that you had? I can't remember the fourth one. Sorry.
No, Joe, that was, that was very thorough. Um to say the least, you have, your department has a lot going on. I thank you for that, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Um the next person we have is Jamal Taylor from sanitation, sanitation supervisor.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing this evening? Good, good. Okay, my name is Jamal Taylor. I'm superintendent of the Long Beach Sanitation Department. And um I address you this evening uh so I can update you guys on the status of your, of your Long Beach sanitation department. In the recent months, there has been a, a leadership change uh through our department, so, um and that's just to help improve the city's sanitation daily operations and, and efficiency of the department, so that way we can better serve our residents. Um I just wanna say thank you to the council members, uh Ms. Donna Gaden, John McNally, Greg Scott for having faith in, in myself and my staff um to bring this department where, where it needs to be, um to give the residents the service that they deserve. Uh over the last couple of months, um we've had a, an addition of seven new sanitation vehicles, um and that has greatly helped us improve the department's efficiency and service uh to our residents. Myself and my staff, we have been working closely with uh, with the city manager, John McNally, Mr. Greg Scott, and the DPW office um in order to improve the sanitation. In order to improve the sanitation schedule, uh, along with establishing some concrete rules and regulations. Not only to inform uh, the public, uh, but to establish clear guidelines for our residents and our commercial district. So that way, we can keep Long Beach uh, as clean as possible. We now have a brand-new sanitation inspector who will help, who will help the sanitation department uh, with code enforcement. Especially in our commercial districts. Also, and all, and, and also to uh, inform our residents uh, on some clear guidelines that we have, that we uh, that we now have in place. I'm very pleased to announce um, the return uh, of our residential e-cycling container. That, that should be up and running real soon. Along with uh, our paint and chemical drop-off and clothing donation locations. That should be up and running uh, very, very shortly. Um, as uh, Mr. Fabrizio said in DPW, our, our annual stop program is uh, is, is coming up. It's going to be this Sunday, November eighth, from, from eight to three. Five hundred, located at five hundred Centus Street. Um, any other time we don't have the stop program, residents can bring their hazardous waste. Uh, de- directly down to the sanitation garage, um, and we will take it from them there. As far as, yes, ma'am?
This is Liz. For those that don't know, can you give the address for the sanitation drop-off?
Oh, absolutely. It's going to be one fifty West Pine Street, and that's going to be uh, right behind the Long Beach Recreation Ice Arena. If you go over by the baseball fields, um, Long Beach Sanitation is, is, is on that uh, block. Along with two other um, departments, our beach maintenance department and our, and our highway department. You can find us there.
Thank you.
Anytime. Any other questions?
Um, Jamal, this is Mike Delory. Thank you for your uh, your report. When people, let me just backtrack. Can batteries be dropped off at either A, this stop program? That's going to be held November eighth, or at the garage, um, which you just mentioned? Or it should be done at a different location? Um, you know, those Duracell batteries or any other type of battery?
Yes, no, we, we accept uh, household batteries, car batteries, any type of batteries, we accept down at the sanitation garage. So anytime that you guys want to bring them down, um, the hours of drop-off is Monday through Friday, seven AM to two PM.
Okay, thank you, Jamal. If I was going to drive down the street, would there be a bin to drop it off in? Or do you, uh, if there's a, the reason I'm asking is because people have asked me. So that's, they would drive down the block with their, their batteries and there, is there like a bin, like a clothing bin, battery cycle? Or is there a, uh, they walk in and have to be handed to somebody?
Well, as of right now, you can just drive up and um, give them to us um, directly at the sanitation garage. Coming soon, there will be a bin uh, stationed outside. So there will be a binge shortly. It just hasn't been uh, been received yet. But uh, as of right now, you can drive directly up to the sanitation garage and somebody, uh, an employee will ta- will take them from you from there.
And that, and that street is just um, east of Whitbread's Lumber and then uh, west of where the food pantry is or the. The soup kitchen. It's in the middle of the block there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Jamal. Appreciate it.
Anytime. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
This is Karen. Uh, Mr. Taylor, I just want to thank you for your report. It's very refreshing to hear directly from the sanitation department. In my, uh, I'm a newcomer to Long Beach. I've only been here almost sixteen years. So I think this is the first time I've ever heard from a direct-line supervisor. From the sanitation department, which I'm really honored. Um, and I know that the, the main reason for that is Ms. Ms. Don McGaden, uh, Mr. McNally, Mr. Greg Scott, and Mr. John Mooney. So uh, thank you for your continued service to make sure that our departments are working together and functional. And that are uh, helping the city move forward. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next person is our new community development director. She's going to tell you about our programs. Monique Powell. You're up, Monique.
I'm up. Hello, everyone. Uh, I hope everyone as well. Um, and thank you for having me. Um, I'm, I'm excited to be in this role. I'm passionate about um, developing the community, no pun intended. So thank you for giving me uh, the opportunity and I've, in this platform. One of my guiding principles is to be very transparent, um, and overly communicate, but again, hold everyone accountable. Uh, the only way by doing that is by talking, so I thank you. Um, so my main goal as a director of community development, um. Is to make people aware of various problems in the community, um, a- a- and develop them, obviously. Um, and that is in areas, education, health, recreation, employment, youth and seniors. And the best way to do that is to gather, uh, collaborate and have data-driven decision-making. And when I say the data-driven decision-making is having a community needs assessment. Uh, where all stakeholders in the community are involved and input, um, and create this robust uh, community needs assessment. With community involvement, stakeholders, and use that data as to create a main strategy or system. To approach how we will develop our community moving forward. Um, and in doing that, you then have metrics that are created, uh, where you can evaluate programs and even evaluate success for what we all do. Um, so I was able to start getting an idea of the community needs assessments that has already been done. From various stakeholders in the community, from the education, from the CBOs, community-based organizations. But to create one from the city in collaboration with everyone will be great. Um. So I started and I met with the school district and Dr. Romanelli, and one of the immediate needs, and again, this, this needs assessment is outside of COVID. It is clear the need that we need from COVID. So one of the first thing I was working on is what we call learning spaces, we're calling them. And the need for the kids to have, the children, excuse me, to have supervised learning happening. Um, where it's safe, where there's actual touchpoints for them, so on this, to make sure that they're comprehending. And obviously, outside of the school grounds, because the school cannot do it alone and can't house everyone because of COVID. Um, so we started that project. We would have been meeting with the school district to identify what's needed to do it the right way. And the first thing that is happening is a actual survey that's going to go out to address the need. So with every project from community development, it's some type of data so that we know where we're going. Are we doing it right? Um, and to answer the questions that will come up, it, it has to be a need, and it has to be a certain amount for the community to say that it is a need. So with these learning uh, spaces that we're calling them, is where the uh, children can come in, uh, continue their instruction. Um, have supervision, uh, and be able to uh, focus on their learning, still have the breakfast and the lunch provided by the school district. Um, and that's during the school settings. Um, so I don't know if there's any questions about the learning spaces, uh, but that is where we at with that. Sorry about that. Um, but that is with the learning spaces. Any questions about that? No, great. So um, another thing is to identify the needs of our seniors. I've been talking to some of our stakeholders who are heavily involved uh, with the seniors. Um, to make sure their needs are being met. Uh, one of the things uh, with the seniors, uh, is their uh, access to the internet. Everything is Zoom, so we have to make sure the learning curve is met for the seniors, so that they're still getting some of those services. Um, so we've been uh, researching, analyzing the programs that are out there, what their needs are, and meet with some CBOs. That is with the seniors. Um, and I think that's about it. This is my first meeting, so I'm nervous, sorry, but I think that was about it.
Are there any questions for Simone? Thank you so much, um, Simone. Monique?
I just want to welcome her, uh, Monique. This is Mike Delory. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I will say is that when the Monique came, she hit the ground running, um, as far as trying to help us get the programs up and going. Meeting with all of the stakeholders and even, we're looking at applying for grants that will help us get some of our programs um, up and running. So again, thank you. And then the last person that's going to speak from our team is Ina.
Hello. Uh, good eve- hello?
Hello, we hear you.
Yeah, okay, good, good, good. Um, good evening. Uh, so uh, just want the, wanted to leave a couple of things that the controller's department is involved in. Um, you probably know that about two weeks ago, city manager asked me to communicate to all city employees. Uh, the fact that uh, we are suspending all of the city non-essential spending. Um, I um, forwarded the memo on the um, topic to the city council. And uh, basically, this is the second week uh, that uh, we have this um, implemented. Uh, we asked all the departments to um, suspend all non-essential spending, all essential spending. Um, to be um, only um, done after it's approved by the essential spending committee. Um, the central spending committee is uh, um, has five people on the committee. It's city manager, um, Greg Scott, um, uh, Ro- Rosemarie Alton, Joe Fabrizio, and I. Uh, we review all purchase orders that um, were deemed essential by the staff. Um, and we decide us through discussions and review of the supporting documentation. If those um, purchase orders should be processed. Um, I also, in that memo, I mentioned the fact that the all city departments um, need to really abide by the state procurement policy. And not to um, engage in any direct purchases. The city has been uh, um, historically um, looking at the, um, the information I have um, in, in a system. Um, a lot of purchases were done outside of the procurement process, basically. There is a need in a department and the department representative or department head um, goes and acquires. Goods or services directly from the vendor bypassing uh, the process. Obviously, that's problematic on many different levels, because I might not have invoices for this, uh, goods or services. That were presented to the city for months. Um, so we really don't know uh, where we stand financially. And uh, that was one of the major points of the memo, to please do not proceed with that, because city will not be in a position to honor those purchases. Uh, that are not done through the procurement. Um, I have to say, from my point of view, I think that the city department. Really took this too hard, because uh, purchase orders that I've seen that got to my desk. Um, I, I'd say probably ninety-nine percent of them, I would deem to be absolutely essential. Um, and I could see the drop in non-essential spending, and I have to thank everyone who really of. Answered to that call, and um, uh, thank you very much. Um, so yeah, we have, uh, one point also I wanted to make is that this uh, does not apply to the water sewer or capital funds. Uh, this pertains only to the general fund that is really suffering due to COVID. And the fact that the city is losing a lot of revenue that was originally budgeted for this fiscal year. Um, so that, that, that's with that, that's the process that we, for now, we're going to follow on a weekly basis. And until we get some federal support or state support or COVID is over, uh, we're going to pursue that. And um, hopefully, um, we, we can somewhat um, address the shortage in revenue by decreasing. Uh, spending of other than personnel cost for now. So, um, also wanted to let you know that um, what, last week. Um, city started to use in a test instance, uh, procurement module of MUNIS. So uh, basically, what has been happening um, before and what's still happening. Uh, when departments need to procure um, goods or services. Uh, they write or type requisition that's then sent to um, our procurement department. And then that requisition gets re-typed into the MUNIS. And then manually circulates from procurement to controller's office to city manager, back to procurement. Um, so with uh, uh, our city IT is really amazing. Um, it's um, we, we have very, uh, very um, um. Lean staffing there, but uh, they're able to accomplish uh, a really amazing things, uh, with, with that level of staffing. So um, right now, we are uh, having um, recreation department and beach and maintenance. Um, doing whatever they use to um, either write or type um, in um. Now they enter this information in MUNIS, and that information gets, and that information gets um. To our procurement department, where they either um, approve or deny. And then um, it doesn't have to get to the controller's office anymore. That was not why we implemented it. Uh, but the system actually checks for the budgets. Only those uh, requisitions uh, that don't have sufficient budgets. Are sent to my attention where I can start the conversation with the departments on how to fund them. Um, so that's obviously a big advantage, because it um, eliminate, eliminates unnecessary steps. Um, for, for typing stuff two times and then checking it. If the system can do it itself, there is no need for uh, need to check for the budgets. Because I go into MUNIS to do that, so MUNIS can do it itself in, internally. Um, so workflow was established for certain um, thresholds and certain uh, sources of funding. Um, th- th- these documents are circulated from the departments to procurement, to my office, and down to the city manager. Uh, as I mentioned, there are only two departments now who are doing this in test. Um, in two weeks, wh- our project plan is to evaluate. Um, issues and issues that uh, we have, evaluate the process, identify any issues. And to fix them and to move those two departments into life. So they will stop doing their paper requisitions, and they will uh, move entirely. Um, their, their procurement process into MUNIS. Um, at that point, we will select a group of five or six other departments that are going to do same thing in test instance. And once they, so, so we're basically going to have this uh, rolling uh, implementation. Um, and um, hopefully, in a matter of several months, we will completely transition to the procurement in MUNIS. Um. So another thing I wanted to mention is that last week, um, I've completed an application. Uh, for the um, CARES three grant. Uh, it's through the US Department of Health and Human Services. Um, it addresses uh, somewhat loss of revenue on the ambulance charges. As you know, uh, we have um, a, a, a federal disaster, and we're going to get reimbursed for, from FEMA. For the additional cost for uh, COVID nineteen. However, um, FEMA is now reimbursing for the loss of revenue. And it's not the major um, source of revenue for the city, but um. It, it's um, obviously something that uh, we shouldn't have been um, uh, neglecting. Um, so another thing I wanted to mention was that uh, this today, well, but all city. Um, uh, department managers received uh, the Excel performance, um, Excel templates. For uh, their twenty-twenty-two budgets, operating budgets. Uh, they're populated with all historic information and projections for the full-time salaries for twenty-twenty-two. So we basically embarked on the budgeting. So we basically embarked on the budgeting process for the next fiscal year. And I will finish it at that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ina, you want to mention the auditors? The audit is starting also this week.
I really don't, but I have to, yeah. The audit is starting this week, yes. They are actually coming on, starting their field work tomorrow and Friday. And I reached out to the departments that they will have to, they will need to talk to. So, yes, we're doing that, though.
Ina, I just, I just want to say that the transition to procurement online is just cannot be understated how important that is and how much work that I know it is for you and all the departments to do. Basically, I view it as an expectation that it should be online, but obviously, it hasn't been up to this point. So I know that you're doing tremendous amount of legwork and it's truly, truly appreciated. This means everything is going to tick and tie in terms of purchases and that we can be accountable to the taxpayers. And the fact that you're starting on the twenty-two budget in terms of your templates is everything that an accountant finance person can dream up. So keep up the good work and it does not go unnoticed. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ina, this is Mike. When you say the testing of the procurement, could you just briefly explain to me or us if a remote location such as the recreation center wants to enter into MUNIS? They could put the, and I realize they're learning it because it's new. When they, have they been trained or is this something that they, is it manual or does that require your physical presence to show them how to do this? That's all.
Sure, sure. So when I said test, I meant test instance. So we city has access to three different environments in MUNIS. One is a live environment. It's the environment that we're using for our day-to-day operation. And then there are two more test and training. And they're used for purposes like that for testing and training. So right now, we're using for the recreation and the beach maintenance department. We're using, as we're rolling this out, we're using not the live instance, but using another instance which we can, it's basically the same thing with the, it's just does not affect the operations and the financials records of the city. But it's basically, it gets all the, it's the same system, right? So in terms of training, training was conducted last week. It was a virtual training. Procurement department, controllers department participated in a training. It was conducted by the IT department. And it was basically train the trainer kind of situation where IT department learned how to train all of us. And they facilitated this training. So that happened last week. And we will see in about two weeks where we stand with that. We'll get all the comments and the feedback from the departments themselves, from the procurement office, from my staff, from Donna who's involved, Donna Gaden, who's involved in the process as well. And we'll incorporate that into the solution when we are moving it to live instance of MUNIS. I hope I answered your question?
Thank you, Ina.
Unfortunately, to be clear, it's an expectation. It's not a choice, correct?
For me, I think that it's definitely something that the city needs to draw on the efficiencies. If we need to, if we want to be, MUNIS is a very powerful system and there is absolutely no reason why we should not utilize all the options that are provided by the system. And they think that originally, like with any kind of change, we will get some pushback because even with the most efficient tools, people are resistant to change. But I'm pretty sure that once it's done, once people get used to it, they will realize that what we're doing now is really nineteenth century.
Well, I will only speak for myself that, you know, it's an, for me, it's an expectation and I fully support your initiative. So congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Karen, it's an expectation, not a choice.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Ina? So I'll wrap it up. Just so everybody knows, you know, we've been, I've been interviewing for all of the boards and commissions. And I still have several interviews to go. However, letters have gone out for recreation, housing authority, public safety, planning, senior advisory, advisory, and environmental. The staff will be assigned to a commission for those. And we hope to have our first Zoom meeting the week of November fourteenth. And we, so now I am interviewing and swearing in commissioners. The other ones, we will start working on those. And so for the public, if we have any commission that still has a shortage, we will let, we will put it back out on the website, but it won't be for a couple of weeks because I have about two and a half more weeks of interviews to go. And that's it for my report.
Okay, great. So, so people just got about a one-hour data dump of what's going on. But I hope the key takeaway people are taking is there is a lot of stuff going on, even though we're in the middle of a pandemic. I mean, you heard we're going to be doing a lot of infrastructure and safety additions and upgrades that are coming down. A lot of them. We're revitalizing and the community programs across the city. We're making adjustments to sanitation and improving operations in that department to, to provide a better service. We're standing up all the boards and committees that we promised to do. And it's not just appointing people based on somebody sent an email. They're actually getting interviewed in order to be on these committees. They're going through an interview process. So, so there's, and the other thing that's probably one of the most important things is the fact that we're now adding traceability, trackability, and most importantly, accountability to spending in the city. So now we can do a much better job knowing where your tax dollars are going. So there's a lot of stuff going on. Like I said, even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're not sitting still, the city's not sitting still. The employees are working hard to get things done. So I hope everybody can appreciate that. So with that, Dave, let's move on to the agenda.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item one is resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the general fund budget for the twenty-two thousand, twenty-one, excuse me, fiscal year.
Ina, you want to explain that, please?
You muted, Ina, in case you didn't know.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. I didn't realize. So this amendment pertains to the changes where whenever we have expenses that are more revenues of, that were not included in the budget, we're asking for the city council to amend the budget and to allow for the spending to occur for, in the general fund.
Okay, so just so the public understands. So what this is, is the city brought in a financial advisor, CMA, to help with, again, getting the city back on track financially. They're working with the city manager and Ina on the long-range financial plan. They're helping with all the policies that we're putting in place. They're doing a lot of work on the financial side of the city to, again, get us back on track. So what this is, is the city got a grant to help pay or to pay, not to help pay, but to pay for CMA's work for the city. So that's what this is. So we're basically reallocating the grant money that we received to pay for CMA's contract. And we're reallocating it from the state aid line to the contracted services line so they can now be paid. So just so everybody's clear on that. Right, Ina? Did I get that right?
You did it. You got it absolutely right.
Okay.
Neither revenues nor expenses for this were originally incorporated in the city's budget. So I'm working with the Department of Budget of the State of New York about to send out the reimbursement request because this grant works on a reimbursement basis. And we're in a position where we can actually see that the budget will be amended, that the budget needs to be amended so we can account for the revenues and pay for the expenses occurred in this case with the CMA.
Okay, do we have any questions from any of the council members?
Just a question, Ina. This is basically setting up a receivable and with money to come to the city from the state? Or is this money that we've received already?
We did not receive this money, no. This is setting up the budget. I only can spend up to the amount that the city council had approved by the budget. I have no authority to authorize payments of any invoices that go outside of the budget. So this is to amend the budget to allow for the receipt of the revenues and payment of the expenses.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions from the council? All right, Dave, we got any questions from the public?
Yes, we do. Roy Lester.
Okay.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are, Roy.
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Okay, back on June second, twenty-twenty, we passed a resolution and in that resolution, it said the resolve that the controllers hereby authorize and directed to pay the cost of the receipt of duly executed contract. Now, this was the contract with CMA at ten thousand dollars a month. And duly executed contract and certified claims, therefore with funds available in account number A twelve ten dash five four 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 zero. Now, if you look at the budget in that line, there was a hundred forty-four thousand dollars put aside. And now you're adding, according to this, you're adding that in addition and increased appropriation for that exact line. Which, by the way, I also am curious what A, you have increased revenues A one oh five one zero and increased appropriations A two zero nine six zero. Neither one of those which appear in the budget anywhere. So it seems to me that this was already in the budget and by the resolution, you said that it was in the budget. So now you're saying it's not in the budget. And also, I'm sorry, because the cord non cuts me off. I also want to ask about the, in the contract, it said that together with the city manager, one of the things that we're hiring them for, together with the city manager, SCG will prepare a written report for the city council on a quarterly basis that provides an update of the status of SCG's activities for the prior quarter. Okay? This was all part of the CMA contract, but I've never seen that written report. Can you tell me where to find that?
I will take on the first part of your question.
And I'll take the second part of the question.
Okay. So, Roy, I really appreciate how, how much in detail you review everything that we do. I'm sure that you have a budget book or the budget for fiscal twenty-two thousand in front of you. And when you're mentioning a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, it pertains to fiscal year twenty-twenty. When this June second resolution was approved at that point, there were funds in, in the general fund in that account to cover for the portion of the expense that was attributed to that fiscal year. We budget and pay on an annual basis. If you look at that budget book or if you have a document in front of you, you would see that there is nothing budgeted in that line for twenty-two thousand because we had, we waited for the communication from the FRB. We got reassurances pretty much back in June that this grant was forthcoming. And right now, obviously, asking for this amendment. Accounts that you're mentioning in, when you mentioned the accounts, the A accounts, those are the appropriation accounts and their budgetary accounts. So governmental accounting is a little tricky. So budgetary accounts have their own numbers. You wouldn't see them in the actual general ledger for the actual expenditures. I think that with that, I answered the first part of your question. So I will give it to Donna to.
The second part of your question, we can post their report online. The council has received a quarterly report from CMA.
And you'll post it, Donna?
Sure will.
Okay. And by the way, I know I ask a lot of questions, but I got to thank Karen for also starting to pick it up. Karen, you're doing a great job.
You know, always do better. Thanks to you.
All right. That's it.
All right, thanks, Roy. Anyone else, Dave?
That's it.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Okay, items two, three, and four have been taken off the calendar. Item five is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held November seventeenth at seven P.M. Item six is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application wave or street parking requirements for premise one twenty-six East Park Avenue for Jim's Studio. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held again on November seventeenth at seven P.M. Now on to the voting portion. Item one is a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the general fund budget for the twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand fiscal year. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
If you can bear with me, there's, there's actually ten members of the New York State Financial Restructuring Board for local governments, including State Controller Thomas Danapoli, the Secretary of State Rosanna Rosado, and the Attorney General Letitia James. These, these members of New York, of this board for New York State are actually helping us to clear up our own mess. And I'm forever grateful to them and thankful to our administration for petitioning to get this funds. And I vote yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I will.
President Bendo.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Excuse me, one second. Okay. And finally, item six is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing and a, excuse me, of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 126 East Park Avenue for a gym studio. Who introduces move the adoption of this item? Anyone?
Come on.
I will.
Thank you. Second?
I will.
Scott?
Scott? Okay, Scott. Good. Okay. Uh, voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we'll go on to good and welfare. Um, so uh, you get three minutes uh, to talk about what you want to talk about and uh, please uh, keep the, with some decorum and let's get going and let's see if Roy will be first.
How'd you guess? Okay, Roy. I just asked you to unmute. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm asking questions about the uh, the revenue, what do you call it? Beach financial scorecard for August 2020. Now each page here is for the two months ending August 31st, August 31st, 2021. I assume that's an error. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be August 31st, 2020.
It's not an error.
It, it's in fiscal year 21.
Yeah. July is the fiscal year, Roy.
Yeah. It's for July and August.
For 2021, it says two months ending August 31st, 2021. So you're telling me that's correct?
That is correct. That's for the months of July and months of August. Our fiscal year started on July 1st. So from July 1st to August 31st, it's two months.
2020. It's 2020.
That's what I thought, Donna.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. It's fiscal year, it's fiscal year 21, though. So that's from, the month is August, yes, but the fiscal year is 2021. We're reporting on a fiscal year basis.
I understand that, but all right, listen, I'm not gonna.
Confusing, okay.
Roy, in finance and accounting, we go by 2021, that's the.
I want you to say a month ending.
Okay.
All right, but anyway, basically we're talking about one-sixth of the year. And that, which is about 16.6% of the year. And you look at the amount of money used in some of these items. And it's, you know, some of them have already used up the entire money for the year, more than that. A lot of them are way over 16%. How do we justify that? I mean, let's say the city clerks used up 20% of their budget. And you know, these are not things that are seasonal or something like that. Um, Central Garage has used up already 33% of their budget. Um, Shade Trees, 100% of their budget, Employees Counseling, 60% of their budget. Just, I mean, allocated and unallocated insurance, 119% of their budget. Is there any explanation for this or it just?
Yes, there is. This includes encumbrances. So when departments encumber their expenses, they encumber for the whole year. So if a clerk's office has um, a contract for um, I don't know, one of their um, equipment or whatever else, they can have, yeah, photocopy. They, they encumber for the whole year. Um, actually, uh, that allows us to not over spend. We know exactly uh, what needs to be um, allocated towards the existing contracts. Therefore, for those departments that have this long-term maintenance contract or service contract or um, some uh, contracts for the goods, uh, they're entered into the system as encumbrances and they limit spending outside of the budget.
So if you say it gives you control, have you justified when it goes over 100%?
Well, something like insurance, so for something like insurance, when the budget is prepared, uh, when you see that it's uh, at 119%, it's actually um, invoices that we're receiving for or the contract or the quotes that we're getting for the insurance um, are higher than what was anticipated in a budgetary process. Um, that's the explanation for those items that are over 100%. But where you see that more than 16% uh, were used, it's not necessarily to alert you. It's to just identify is that um, this, this uh, column um, has both actual and encumbrances in it.
Okay, is there any breakdown of what those encumbrances are?
Oh, absolutely. There is a breakdown for those. And um, if you want to know any specific client or for the whole fund, um, I'd be more than happy to um, share that with you. I'm sure that someone in my office has your email address and I'll make sure that I'll provide that to you.
I, I just get concerned. I, I see the expenses of the sewer department is already 230,000 over in two months. 230,000 over what they were expected to pay. Well, what's in the budget? So, yes, I do get concerned about it. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Roy, I just want to say congratulations on be, on being Long Beach Charles hometown hero this week.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, please. I had no idea about that either.
Okay. Uh, Dave, uh, who's next?
Eileen Hessian.
Okay, hi, Eileen. Yep, we can hear you.
Hello. Um, first I'd like to thank Roy for being our fiscal watchdog. He pays careful attention and I appreciate it. I just have three quick things. First, I'd like to thank Beach Maintenance. The plaque on my bench on the boardwalk had been missing for about a year. And when I contacted them, they recreated it and put it up and I appreciate the uh, way they handled it and with good humor. It was, I appreciate it. The second thing is, I'm glad to see that Martin Luther King has hired a new director. That's a necessary part of our community. I hope he will uh, be successful, get the center open quickly and restore and increase the programs that are going on there. We need them and I wish him luck. And the third thing is about the Hebrew Academy, the 530 West Broadway. Um, it's still a mess. There's broken glass. They've taken down the fencing between the boardwalk and the uh, area itself. There are broken windows. There's water in the pool. It's dangerous. The owner, Whittick, the developer, needs to clean it up. And I know once before I brought this up and I think Scott had mentioned that they were fining them and I'm wondering if they're at least paying the fines. If at least, you know, they're not cleaning it up, at least pay the fines. That's it. Any response to that?
Um, I just have one question, Eileen. This is Mike Delory. You had mentioned Scott said that. I, I assume.
Kemmons.
Scott Mandell, correct?
No, 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 I'm sorry. Scott Kemmons had, uh, you know, when I, I brought pictures actually what went on there and he said.
Remember. Thank you.
Yeah, they were fining. But are we collecting fines from them?
Eileen, I will check and, and let you know because Scott's not on the call tonight, but I will let you know.
Okay, because they are not good neighbors now and it makes me think that if they, God forbid, build there, they will be very bad neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Eileen. Dave, uh, who's next?
That's it.
That's it? Wow, okay. So, all right, everyone, thanks for joining us tonight. Um, I believe we're gonna be having a working meeting next Thursday. Uh, so there'll be information on the website about that, on how to tune in. But in the interim, uh, I hope everyone has a good night. Then uh, we could all run back to our favorite news channel and see if we have a president yet. So uh, everyone have a good night. Take care.
All right, everyone.
Put the TV on. I think Biden has accepted.
Okay. All right.
My hardest vote, are we still on?
Uh, we're, we're off the stream, but we have still, the COA is still on and uh,
Monique is still on.
Yeah, we still have two people on. Hang on.
Does I have a question um, to ask?